I am getting there. I still can't lift my arm up to the floor.
All right, at this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson.
Here.
Trustee Durrell.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Walsh-Lager.
Here.
Trustee Ledke.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
President Van Der Stil.
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Connor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if we have any member, anybody that would like to speak in public comments for items that are not on the agenda, you can step towards the podium at this time. Oh, you can't, okay. Picked a bad time to get up.
Which one is he?
Mr. Bailey.
He's not public anymore.
Since no one would like to speak in public comments, we will move to our first item on the agenda, which is a consideration of a motion to approve Village Board minutes from the February 10th, 2020, meeting.
Awesome.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Village Board minutes from the February 10th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments. These are in the amount of $330,080.31.
I make a motion to approve the vouchers for $330,080.31. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to pay the vouchers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have, these are items that are referred from the February 17th Plan Commission meeting. There's actually only a discussion and consideration of a motion to approve a conditional use permit for mander collision at 705 Cardinal Lane for the operation of an automotive insurance repair business.
I make a motion to approve the conditional use for mandarin collision in glass. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve this conditional use for mandar collision and glass, as stated. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'll stay.
That motion is carried. Next item, we have discussion and consideration of an intermunicipal agreement for law enforcement services for the 2020 Democratic National Convention in Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just a quick summary of the document. It's a long legalese document that you have in front of you that references a lot of statute and federal grants that the city of Milwaukee is trying to obtain for security for the DNC. That agreement, in a nutshell, basically says that they're applying for these federal grants. If they receive the federal grants, which they're anticipating doing, that anyone that they mutual aid for this event, they would reimburse in full for all their costs, including fringe benefits. The Village of Heartland has had talks with the city of Milwaukee. We are telling them that we were going to give them four officers for this event. These four officers have specialized training, two of which are part of our Waukesha County Civil Disturbance Unit, which has been requested by the city of Milwaukee Police Department for this event, to provide aid in the city of Milwaukee. And then another resource was our Suburban Critical Incident Tactical Team. So, right now, there's three different tactical teams within Waukesha County. The Waukesha County Sheriff has a team, the city of Waukesha PD has a team, and then there's nine jurisdictions that make up the Suburban Critical Incident Team. It has been decided just recently that two Waukesha teams will provide direct aid in the city of Milwaukee. But when we make these plans, we don't want to leave Waukesha County unattended with these type of resources. So, it's been decided that the SCIT team will cover the entire Waukesha County in an event that a critical incident would transpire, or we could have a quick response and still take care of our home jurisdiction. So, with that said, two of our four officers will remain as on-call status, just like our SWAT team or Critical Incident Team operates today, only paged out if needed. So, really, we're looking at just the two officers as part of our Civil Disturbance Unit during the days of the DNC. The language mirrors a lot of the state statute language when it comes to mutual aid assistance. And then it also has been reviewed by our village attorney, and he had no concerns or suggestions for any changes.
I have a couple of questions, since the media always says that Bernie's people say if he doesn't win, they're gonna burn the place down. It's just a question that I have, worried about our people. First of all, four out of seventeen, does that mean we're not gonna have 24-hour protection at night?
No, our coverage doesn't change at all. We actually froze staffing as soon as the DNC was announced in Milwaukee, so about over a year ago. Just like every other police department in southeastern Wisconsin, this is gonna be a regional event. It's not just the city of Milwaukee. There's a lot of events going on throughout southeastern Wisconsin and either northern Illinois, just because of the hotel base doesn't allow for this event this size to just happen in southeastern Wisconsin. So, we will continue to have the same coverage that you've always seen. We are not gonna sacrifice that, like I kinda talked about, our SWAT resources and the planning that went into making sure our home territory was covered. Same thing happens with our patrol officers, is that staffing remains the same as you see it today, and it will be that way throughout the event.
Well, then, I had everything to do, I read the whole agreement here. Phew. It says that we're gonna have to comply with all the codes and the procedures that are set up by Milwaukee Police Department. After listening to the news and everything that's going on, or the local laws and restrictions, are they different than what we have? And if our people don't comply exactly with the way the new laws in Milwaukee are, are we gonna be in trouble?
Now, state statutes obviously say, in state of Wisconsin, state of Wisconsin, they could have some different municipal ordinances than what we have here in the Village of Heartland. But the main intent of that is, if you saw in the agreement, that they would be trained on all of that guidance as well. And what that really comes down to is, there's gonna be instructions given, assignments given, and it's saying, even though if you're from a different department, you're gonna follow that, the leadership that's giving you those assignments or guidance.
And that leadership can come down without a signature, just with an internet signature, and doesn't have to be approved by anybody?
Correct.
And you say we're gonna cover Waukesha County then, because maybe our people will be out here? And you're gonna train them, and we're not gonna have any problems? What?
Can't guarantee the problems, but that, our hope is that.
Do we pay for their, do we pay for our people in addition to them Milwaukee paying for the people?
Yeah.
We pay our people, so it's go through our payroll, but then we would be reimbursed.
So, we reimbursed for?
Reimbursed by the grant.
Yeah, thank you. But what if they don't get the grant?
Then it's null and void.
Then this is null and void, yeah.
Just so that everybody can hear.
I'm sorry, what?
Keep going.
Okay, the, um... Transportation expenses will be estimated from the current GPS mileage. So, our people are gonna get paid for mileage from Heartland to there, even though they don't live in Heartland?
That's not gonna actually happen. There's certain restrictions on the transportation. But for our particular people, as part of the Civil Disturbance Unit, we are actually gonna be meeting, I believe, at the courthouse, and then we'll be being transported there via bus. So, all our equipment and personnel, the whole county Civil Disturbance Unit, which is seventy-ish officers from multiple jurisdictions throughout Waukesha County, will be getting transport via a busing service that the county has set up.
And then the no police authority statement in here, it says unless you're an agency of the municipality, is that for the people that are just like private investigators, and that we still have authority, and that if we wanna arrest somebody in that ability, we will have that ability and it's covered?
That is not just for private, that is for policing. They will have police officers from throughout the country here at this event that will be providing assistance. So, it's mainly for the out-of-state. State statute still applies to us. We have arrest powers, even outside of our jurisdiction, for certain circumstances, and we would remain with those. A lot of that is directed for the officers that will be assigned security positions, not to just be going out conducting criminal investigations, but to be condescending of their assignment.
Worst-case scenario, looking at the payment of wages and benefits personnel, and talking about insurance, Milwaukee scares me, that's a foreign country. The insurance, our insurance covers our people no matter if they're in our village or if they're out of our village. Is there any coverage with Milwaukee versus ours? I mean, I don't want our people to ever be in a situation where we're on the thin ice.
So, a couple of different things there. The grant would reimburse wages and fringe benefits, so we would have some costs that would be covered through the fringe benefits. But then, our state statute mutual aid language is if you're mutual aided by that jurisdiction, that jurisdiction is on the line if anything were to happen to that particular individual. So, they would have to pay all costs, and that's via state statute, that's...
Do you mean by the...
God help us that that never happens.
Correct. And that works for us as well today. So, if we were to mutual aid someone to assist us here in Heartland, that officer from another jurisdiction gets hurt, the Village of Heartland's on the hook for any type of issues that would arise out of that injury.
Well, I think it's very nice that, you know, that we're making that commitment to them, but it just scares me going into that foreign country to do our job, and as long as we're protected, you know, that's, I have, that's no problem with that.
Yep, our officers have the specialized training and equipment. I have full confidence that they know what they're doing and they will do a good job with it. Obviously, there's always the unknown, but I do not anticipate any issues.
How many hours in per day?
Nothing has worked out, because what happens is all these agreements come forward, then Milwaukee's asking for all these agreements by March 1st.
Okay.
Then they're gonna take them and build a schedule based off that, and seeing what type of resources they have available, and what areas they need assignments covered.
But our map should be four people.
They'll make a, really, two.
Two.
Because the other two that were initially in premature discussions were part of that SCIT, IT team, that SWAT team, if you will, and because now we've been designated as the Waukesha County team, they're just, they're on an on-call basis, just like they are today.
Okay.
Just like our officers would be patrolling, and then the pager goes off, they would then respond, and it would be for a Waukesha County-type incident, unless there was something major, and it was an emergency situation that they needed another team's support. I'm sure that could come up, but that would, that could happen tomorrow, outside of the DNC and other mutual aid. We could provide that type of assistance. So, really, we're just providing the two. I'm assuming probably something close to 12-hour days.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Anybody else? And with that, we would entertain a motion. I would entertain a motion. We would entertain a motion. Either way.
I'll move. Let's consider an intermittent municipal agreement for law enforcement services for the 2020 DNC in Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the intermunicipal agreement for law enforcement services for the 2020 Democratic National Convention in Milwaukee, as presented by Chief. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. At this time, we have a presentation of the Heartland Police Department for their 2019 annual report.
Thank you.
Oh, good to see you, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Everyone should have received a copy. They were delivered to each of the trustees. I just wanna take a short moment, just for a quick summary, and if there were any questions, I'd be more happy to answer those. Paging through the annual report, going on to our 2019 highlights, I just wanted to hit some of those. We had Officer Robert Jewell assigned to the new position as that patrol detective, or that halftime detective position. At the same time, Detective Jewell retired from his position as a negotiator with the Suburban Critical Incident Team. That's great training for us, so even though he's not part of that unit, we got a lot of great, he got a lot of great experience in training and being part of that. With that, that was our last commitment as a negotiator. So, we actually were looking to add two, and we had three officers interested, and they all did a phenomenal job on the recruitment process. So, we ended up appointing Officer Thomas Bagan, Officer Luke Joswick, and Detective Paula Hafa onto our negotiator list for the Suburban Critical Incident Team. Officer Conrad Saboniak attended our state-certified Defense and Arrest Tactics instructor course, and now he can teach those DAT, or Defense and Arrest Tactics, to our Lakes Training Group. And then, at the same time, Officer Nick Greenwood attended training to become a state-certified firearms instructor, and the same thing goes for him. He's now able to teach and instruct our Lakes Training Group as a firearms instructor. Officer Dylan Gergo completed his one-year probation period in June of last year. I was lucky enough to get accepted and attend the Senior Executives in State and Local Government Program at the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. Our longtime administrative assistant, Vicki Doberton, retired from the police department in fall, and then her retirement opened up a property custodian position, and we placed administrative assistant Lori Matula-Barr into that position. We also hired Cindy Gardner as our part-time administrative assistant with the police department. And then, also to note, we received that 90% grant for that LiveScan fingerprint device. Some of the cooperative efforts are outlined here. I think those are important, because it just shows the training and resources that we've used in a very efficient and effective manner throughout Waukesha County. And I'm just gonna page ahead, just 'cause I know you guys are all aware of those things and had time to read through those. But then, our annual report goes into our, obviously, our mission statement and vision statement, and then goes into our command structure. There's a picture that kinda designates how our command structure and where the officers are assigned on each patrol shift, and how that works within the Heartland Police Department. And then, we break it into a little more specific by showing you each individual officer, when they started their service with the Village of Heartland Police Department, and where they fall into the command structure. So, we start with our management page, with the four command staff, myself, Deputy Chief Calera, Captain Kelsey, and Lieutenant DeBarge. Into our investigations, where we have Detective Hafa and Robert Jewell. And then, our day team patrol team, Officer Jorgensen, Monday, Miller, and Haig. To our early team patrol team, Officer Greenwood, Saboniak, Bagan, and Gergo. And then, finally, our late team patrol team, Officer Majewski, Seager, and Joswick, which will then bring you to an activity report. This just highlights some of our overview statistics on our calendar year. On the reports that you initially received, there was an actual error, so there was a transposed error when they updated the 2018 to 2019 statistics. If you look under the middle column of persons arrested, there was a total amount of 133 for 2019. That should actually read 156. If you look just to the left of that number, you'll see that 2018 was 133, and on the data entry, that one got skipped for some reason. So, there was actually a slight increase in persons arrested for 2019. The only other things I'd like to highlight on that page is our calls for service were up from 2018 by about 700 calls for service. That's total calls for service, and that could be for anything. Anyone calling the police department for some type of service or requests, anything of that nature. We had 136 traffic accidents, which were slightly up. Our traffic contacts were slightly down. However, our traffic citations were slightly up. You'll see OWIRS were slightly up, and our parking citations were slightly up, and then our state prosecutions, that's where we actually have a state felony or misdemeanor, where we charge that through the district attorney's office, where it's 73. And then, midway through this, we started capturing emergency detentions, and then very recently, probation holds, just because those are things we do regularly enough, and each one of those can consume a lot of our time and obviously, resources. An emergency detention, for example, even though we are towards the lower end of our historical use, and that's mostly because the county has implemented a crisis response team, and the goal of that, and per state statute, it's the least restrictive means possible to help get someone mental health help. But when it comes down to an emergency detention, that can take an officer off the road for eight hours in and of itself, because of the medical clearances we need to do, the paperwork we need to do, and then ultimately, the placement, which could include going all the way to Winnebago, mental health, to make placement for that particular individual, depending on bed availability. So, they do take a lot of time and energy, so we wanted to start capturing those, to see where our time and resources was being spent. And then, probation holds, we work very closely with the State Department of Corrections Probation Office. We actually have an agent that works out of the police department one day a week. We work hand-in-hand with her to keep tabs on everyone on supervision, to make sure they're compliant with their supervision. But there's times, obviously, that we run into people that are not, and then a probation hold is placed, and we assist, either through that agent, or it could just be a fresh time that we're investigating, where probation puts a hold on a person. But once again, just that probation hold takes that officer off the road, then to transport to the jail and potentially, any medical clearance if needed. And then, the last page I wanna talk about was our operations complaints and operation compliment page, which is the next page past the statisticals, the statistical page. Total, in 2019, we had two department complaints filed. One was exonerated, one was unfounded. Both were in regards to traffic stops, where the individual had some type of grievance, whether they didn't think they deserved the citation, or part of one complaint was that the officer had a handgun on them. I can't help that. That's a state statute responsibility, and we will continue to do that for the safety of our officers. So, that's why you see one is exonerated, which means what the complainant said, we did, but we were justified in doing. And then, unfounded was basically, it was just a false complaint. There was no merit to it whatsoever. But then, I think what paints a full picture here is when you look at our compliments. These are people that we're dealing with in an enforcement-type action oftentimes, and they're still taking the time to compliment the officers throughout the Village of Heartland. We had 63 total compliments throughout the year, and that includes 19 different employees. So, it's not just one guy that's doing it. It's all over and spread throughout the police department, providing a good professional service to the citizens of the Village of Heartland. And this can include anything, traffic stops, calls for service, just interaction that they may have had with a police officer throughout their day. And that's the summary of the annual report. Any questions?
I just wanna say one thing, like this last report, this speaks volumes, I think, of our police department, 63 compliments and two complaints that were unfounded. You go back and look at all the interactions, when you go up here, of all the service calls and stuff like that, that's tremendous, so great job.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Even if you look at robbery, burglaries down, criminal damages way down, that's all due to you guys, you know, the patrol, respect for the police department. Outstanding job, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
I have to say that I just appreciate, you know, when you go to this cooperative efforts, this is, was what stood off the page to me, this constant work with other municipalities in our region, in our state, to continue to get the best training for not only our officers, but work with other officers as well, because you do back each other up, and that, to me, stood out. I mean, this is impressive.
We are in an industry that's getting more and more technical by the day, and these certifications and trainings take a lot of man-hours, so where we can combine resources and work and operate effectively together, we try to capitalize on that.
Very impressive.
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please pass it on to the rest of the board.
Yes, we'll do. Thank you.
Absolutely. Add that to the 63 compliments.
Well, thank you, Chief. The next item on the agenda, item six, is discussion and consideration of a motion to approve contractor's application for payment number three for the Crystal Drive lift station modifications, in the amount of $11,125. I believe that we might have someone from the village that would like to speak on that.
Yes, Dave Halkner, Heartland Utilities. We are actually gonna pull this off the agenda for tonight, because the village, the DPW is not satisfied with the construction. We have one little flaw that we have to, they have to get repaired, and we'll bring it back to the board once they fix the building.
We're tableing it? It's gonna need to be longer than a month?
Well, you can, if you want. I prefer to postpone it, but...
No.
You could table it if you want. It's just then we gotta take care of it at the next meeting.
No.
I was just, I didn't know what the date.
Well, so, they had the manufacturer come out. He says it's a minor repair, but I just wasn't comfortable with doing it. We do have a $5,000 bond on it, but I just wanna make sure, since it's the building, I just wanna hold it off.
If you're suggesting to push it off, I would like to push it off. I can only speak for myself, among seven, but I have a feeling you'd be in the same position as I am.
So, do we technically just postpone it?
Either or would be in order, a motion to table or a motion to postpone. I just couldn't remember the date of the next meeting.
For longer than a month?
Or...
Till the next...
If we table the motion, then we have to take it up next meeting, otherwise, the motion just dies on its own. If we postpone the motion, we can keep on postponing it if we had to go pass it. So, either one would be in order, and I'm sorry, that was rude of me to say, we can't table it, but that's why I, like in looking at the rules, I'm like, well, why not just always postpone it? There's more leniency, but either one would be in order. I just, I don't know the date.
March 9th?
March 9th is the next.
The next Village Board meeting, okay. I didn't have that.
Can we just postpone until it's done?
I'd postpone.
You can make your motion, Robin.
Oh, I don't, I don't... I'll make a motion to postpone discussion consideration regarding the Crystal Drive lift station until everything's 100%.
Sounds great.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to postpone that item until we have sufficient results. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is postponed until we are notified by the administrator or DPW Utilities Director, Manager, Supervisor. We now have, the next item is a discussion and consideration of a motion to approve an employee leasing agreement with GovTemp's relating to the filling of the interim director of Public Works position.
So, we came in front of the board here about a month ago, requesting permission to reach out to GovTemp's and interview, and meet with some Director of Public Works consultants to help us come in and take a look at some of the policies and procedures in the DPW before we move forward, bringing on a full-time DPW director. We had an opportunity, we ended up with three qualified resumes. One of them, logistically, wouldn't have worked out very well. Two of them, we set up interviews for. Unfortunately, the second one backed out due to some health reasons, and so ultimately, interviewed myself, Ryan Bailey, our finance director Bailey, both gentlemen from the DPW, and Darlene, our wonderful village clerk. Had an opportunity to meet with Dan Elson, and had an opportunity to talk about what he brings to the table and what we're looking for, and I think we're all comfortable moving forward with bringing him on board. Before you, is a contract with GovTemp's. Again, this will not be our employee, so the cost, the hourly cost is a little higher than what a normal wage would be, but that includes all benefits, insurance, work comp, you name it, unless we purposely do something mean to this poor gentleman. He is covered through GovTemp's, so we don't have any responsibility there. The budget comes in under what we have budgeted for a DPW director, and as of now, work about three days a week, probably one day here at Village Hall, and the other two days down at the DPW shop, working, getting some of these items taken care of, cleaned up and addressed, recommending how we should move forward with a new DPW director, and then hopefully, helping us recruit, interview, and retain a new DPW director in the next couple of months, so...
Okay, I'll say something. I think the guy's very highly qualified. I think you did a great job doing the whole thing, you know, getting this in, you know, part of it. My problem was the $29,125... My problem was the $29,120 that the contract we're talking about signing. And then once we find, sign that contract, then we're looking at finding a placement for somebody that's another $15,000. Now we're up to about $45,000, $50,000 for a project that I, I just didn't know we had an extra $50,000 lying around. And, you know, that's a little kind of concern for me is, it's not a question of the person, and it makes very good, but $50,000 to make a decision on who to hire is kind of, that's a tough one for me, I guess. I don't know. I'm from a small town. I don't know.
Yeah, so I think you're combining two different things. The $91 an hour, which covers all of the expenses for the employee, would be just slightly above what we're going to be paying the new DPW director. But we're only going to have somebody three days a week. And this is a week-to-week agreement. So, again, if this person comes in and is not what we're looking for, there's no risk. If this person comes in and is able to accomplish a handful of the tasks that we need, and we feel we're ready to go out to the marketplace and get a DPW director, we can do that at any time. The extra $15,000 is if we want to buy out this employee. In other words, if this person is, wow, this person is so fantastic, we want to make them our next DPW director, which is not what this person, this person is a retired. They're not looking for a full-time job, and so, I mean, that's not what they're looking for. But the clause is in there, if we want to buy that person out, we have to compensate GOV-TEMS for them doing the recruiting, background check, and helping with the process. So that would be that additional amount that you're mentioning that I don't foresee us doing it.
Yeah, the $41, $91 a month for 24 hours a week times 13 weeks came to $29,120. And then the extra compensation. I don't, boy, we didn't pay that much for you.
You did. Surprisingly, you did. I hope I'm worth it.
Well, you're worth more, that's why.
Wait! Put a note in the tape.
In December. I don't know, it just, boy, I look at what David might have done with, I mean, I see the DPW, like, the snow comes down, the snows go off the roads. I see work done, trees cut down. I see all this work done. I just don't, I don't know, that's a lot of suggestions to make, to make improvements. I don't know, and I, maybe I just have never hired somebody in that particular category, but it just, to me, is, just seemed high.
I think there's a lot of policies and procedures, and we have one of our DPW employees here this evening. I think we have a lot of policies and procedures that need to be tightened up in order to keep us moving forward. I think there's some things that we need to look at as an organization in the DPW to help us evaluate that. And it's, and it's hard, it's hard not having an expert come in and help determine it for us. My fear of hiring a DPW director is the same experience that I'm having here coming on board. There's a lot of things, there's, each one of the board has mentioned items that they want addressed, and now it's already six weeks in, and I'm, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to keep the basic things moving forward. So my fear is, we hire a DPW director, and before we know it, that person is working on the Sunny Slope project, is bogged down in the day-to-day operation, and can't step back and take, take a big look at the policies and procedures. And then help, you know, part of what we do is, we need to help determine what the next director of public works, what that role looks like. And we were, I think we're all in agreeance, that person doesn't necessarily, or maybe shouldn't have a civil engineering degree. But what, what are some of the other aspects and some of the attributes that that person should bring to the table that could help us, help the DPW with the skillset that we have and the skillset that we're bringing up? Where are the holes that we can help fill? And so I think that's the idea, to bring in somebody from the outside that has that experience, that's done that before for a couple of other communities, and can efficiently and effectively do that, and then move on. So that, that's why I feel that this is a pretty good option.
I am, I do agree with Mike on some points that, I mean, this is, I mean, it's a cost. So I'm, I'm there with you. I really am. Trusty Myers, sorry. But I'm there with you. I mean, it's a cost, and there is no guarantee. There's no guarantee this is going to fix everything, but I've looked at a few things. And number one, I agree with you 100%. Dave Falchner, Mike Kraszewski, they're running, they're making it happen. You're right. But I feel like there's two people doing three people's worth of work, and I know that they're putting in a lot of extra effort. I know there's extra effort being put in just so that they can make it happen for this community. And while they do get a stipend, it's not like there's guaranteed forever that that's gone on their salary. And, and part of, you know, part of what we put out there to our new village administrator was saying, "We want you to give us ideas. We want you to use your expertise." Now, I'm not saying we won't hold him accountable if he's wrong, but I think that we need to allow him to say, "You know what? Until you show us not to get behind you when you have an idea, let's do it." I do really like the fact that we're not paying the benefits, and that our administrator, if he says, "It's not working out," then on one week's notice can cut it loose, and we have no strings attached. I do like that. So there's a lot of things you said that I agree with. I personally, my opinion is I want to relieve some things on the two people that are running at the top, who I feel are running really hard. They are being compensated for it, but they're running really hard. Also, I want to see any of these kinks that we've got to get worked out, a DPW worked out. I want to see it come up to date with policies and procedures, where all of a sudden, you know, it's just running like a well-oiled machine. We have a lot of great personnel in there, a lot of people that are willing to work hard. And I also want to give the administrator a chance to say, "Hey, all right, you think this is a great idea? All right, let's give it, let's give it a shot." But I do like not, I like not giving the benefits to just try to get some of this updating, the policies and procedures, and bringing us up to date, and kind of throwing our, throwing my support behind the administrator to give them a whirl. You know, we're not used to some of these new ways of doing things, but I'm willing to, willing to give it a try. I think, I'm hoping that it'll go well. I'm trusting that it will. But like I said, this isn't saying you're wrong. There's a lot of things you're saying I agree with. And I, I guess I'm just willing to give it a shot, even though you're right, there is definitely a cost involved.
I have a question. When you're done.
I'm done. The floor's yours.
Is there, I understand, you know, this is a good option, but if, is there a reason we couldn't have, let's say, the administrator, president, and DPW had come up with what the job should be, hire a DPW director, but have him where, instead of having some other person that's not going to be around for a long time, have that person, just for the first month or six weeks, whatever this person's going to be, just work on streamlining things, not actually doing the work that they're doing. And then once he gets that, he or she gets that done, then they go into what the job's going to be. So that they actually kind of clean up some of the kinks and, you know what I'm saying? Is we would just hire the person and have them do...
I was going to say...
What?
Go ahead.
Oh.
That was, so, a month ago when we presented it, that was one of the options. And this is the direction the board went, and so that's what we did, and I think this is a very good option. I wouldn't recommend it if I thought it wasn't the right thing to do. I also, I think the challenge, we've tried to go out and hire a DPW director. I think we were looking in the wrong direction. But let's, let's use this opportunity with this professional to determine what other skillsets that we might want to add to the search that could help the organization long-term.
But that person isn't actually going to be taking any of the workload off of our two supervisors currently, correct?
This consultant?
Yes.
Yes, this consultant will be here three days a week, not physically working.
But I mean, not actually taking work off of their shoulders. This person will be looking at more of the problems or...
I think short-term, they're going to put work on these people because they're, we want, we want the leadership of the DPW working with this person closely to help form these work rules.
Okay.
Policies and procedures, ultimately, so that all of that paperwork can get off of the supervisor, the superintendents, so that they can be focusing on managing the crews, managing the projects, and then the DPW director has more in the office taking care of the paperwork.
Okay.
To oversimplify that.
You can say that, but I guess, comment I have is, I came out of the corporate world, and this is not uncommon to have a consultant come in. I mean, yeah, when you look at, you know, the $91 an hour, but it's full benefits and everything, but it's a short-term thing. It does pay a lot of dividends without a big commitment. And if you look at this gentleman's resume, I mean, he's got a vast, a broad spectrum of experiences, so he can see things from different lights that we might not be looking at. So, cost-wise, yeah, but if you look at it from a short-term spectrum, it's, it's definitely what corporate world does, and it's, it's cost-effective. Doesn't look like it now, but on the back end, it'll be cost-effective.
Yeah, I think it's really going to set the department up to be more successful than it already is. I think we tend to focus maybe on the issues that are now, knowing we have such a great DPW staff, and so we're concerned about that. But what we need to do is, this has been in place to support them, to let them grow, to continue to grow with Heartland. So I would stand with my original voice two weeks ago with saying that I continue to support this. I think this is the right move, and I appreciate our administrator moving forwards with it so quickly after his hire.
Anybody else? I agree.
I will make a motion to approve the employee leasing agreement with GOV-TEMS related to the filling of the interim director of public works position.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the employee leasing agreement with GOV-TEMS related to filling the interim director of public works position. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. At this time, we will have announcements.
No. I didn't realize that. What did you do with your leg?
Old football injury. Dave Dean, fire chief, just wanted to announce that, I was glad, I think the snow got pushed off for tomorrow on Wednesday? Is that correct?
Yep.
That's great, hopefully. Want to announce that we went through, recently went through our hiring process, and we have offered and been accepted by two individuals. One named Cajal Sharp from Texas, who'll be returning to become one of our full-time paramedic EMT, paramedic firefighters, MPOs. Cajal left us about five, six years ago and went down to help family, and he's coming back, which is outstanding. And we hired a gentleman named Darren Diamond from the Germantown Fire Department, firefighter, paramedic, MPO. And it will be starting within the next month. So we're excited to be moving forward with the hiring process there. And in the meantime, I've got seven applications pending for part-time on my desk right now. So, lots of stuff happening, good things. So I'm excited to announce those two individuals that are coming on board. They'll be here shortly, work their 24-hour shifts.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Anybody else have announcements? I was only there for about, I wasn't there long. I was able to say hi and throw in a donation, which I could have given more, but the VFW effort to raise awareness for homeless veterans was, it really raised awareness, especially since it fell on such a cold night going down there. They did actually sleep in that cardboard. That's rough. But anyways, fantastic that they took the time to raise awareness for that. It sounds like it was a success for what they were pushing forward, and their main thing, as they said, was trying to raise awareness. So from what I saw of it, and from what I've heard back from VFW, I know fire department was down there. Other organizations, I think, stopped through there. It sounds like it was a success.
It was just amazing to see that they really slept in those things.
Yeah, they'll have final numbers, and they'll be publicly announcing that in like two weeks. So, it'll be good.
Okay. Other than that, I don't, does anybody else have any?
I was there too, and I thought it was pretty cool to see how much of the community came to and delivered. Like, some one business brought pizzas in, and so a lot of people just came and dropped off stuff. It was kind of neat to see how many people came forward to help them.
It was surprising that it just happened to fall in cold. It was so cold.
I know. Up in that fire and...
Right.
Nope. But it was neat.
You didn't join them and spend the night?
I didn't. I just went down, and then I was, I was on the move. I actually was coming back from a wrestling regional, so. Any other announcements? Okay, so, at this time, we have possible motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, 1F, and G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel regarding a specific personnel problem and possible investigation involving an employee.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session pursuant of Wisconsin statute 19.85, 1F, and G.
It's been moved and seconded to move into closed session pursuant to, just as stated, may I have a roll, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Trusty Anson?
Aye.
Trusty Duro?
Aye.
Trusty Myers?
Aye.
Trusty Walsleyer?
Aye.
Trusty Lucky?
Aye.
President Anderson?
Aye. That motion passes. So we will go into closed session. We're going to take five to 10 minutes to get settled. We are. We're taking a small recess. We've got to get settled.
10 minutes?
Okay, five minutes, but it may be longer than five minutes. It might be seven.
No, five. Maybe shorter, like three.
Uh, don't be short.
This second could be more. I'm not going to.
That'll go. So we are back in open session now. Unless any board member would like to take action on anything, the only motion in order would be to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded, thirded, and fourthed to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.